Do we have anybody? Okay, I'll call the meeting to an end. And do we have anybody online who's interested in public comment? Thank you. Thank you. Oh, very good, thank you. Okay, so, uh, and I guess Jill and I were both at the last meeting or minutes okay with you?
They look good to me.
Look good to me, so that's done. And, uh, so I think you can go ahead and get started. Kristen, check out when he gets in. So, we are discussing HR goals and focus for this twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And Mr. Dan Kiran and, uh, Ms. Velazquez, uh, have put together some thoughts for us and some plans for us, so.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's really, these really are talking points for the committee's consideration. There's nothing written in stone. These are things that, uh, over the course of this past twelve months to twelve years, been, uh, wanted to get to and hopefully get to. Um, then we can just sort of open the discussion about them. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Gutierrez about the HR training manual. This is, this is exciting stuff.
Yes, so, um, so I'm currently working on a training manual. It's a training, um, process procedural manual, um, that basically, basically goes, um, or I'll read here what my little blurb of the purpose of the manual. Um, so this manual is intended to be used by human resource professionals in the Ethical City School District. The manual outlines procedural processes for all duties that fall under the purview of the Human Resources Office. Um, it should be used in conjunction with existing and future bargaining agreements to ensure compliance with negotiated terms. Uh, the manual also serves as a training manual for new employees and as a guide for administration in informing, um, of the next steps for procedural processes, uh, such as, and not limited to, recruitment, hiring processes, onboarding, employee maintenance, salary calculation, benefit management, attendance management, performance, and tenure recommendations. It will be a working manual, um, that will be updated accordingly as new processes are created, changes, so, um.
So the idea that it would be, audience would be both, uh, administrators and folks who have to, uh, to engage in procedures in terms of hiring and, and retention, um, and then also for new employees to know what they're supposed to be going through.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hope is that, um, you know, as we have transitions, people retire, um, that, um, institutional knowledge, um, will then be retained through this manual. And since it's a working manual, it will be, um, updated as we bring in new, you know, uses of platforms. Um, one of them we'll be talking about, um, later school front. Um, and so, yeah, just, just, uh, instead of, you know, every time we get new people, um, having, it will, it will save on, on training as well, the training time that's put into,
Hmm.
um, into training when it's like a one-to-one person, having the manual brought out for someone to say, okay, look at this manual, and then, you know, we will serve as guidance and, yeah.
Right. Can answer questions and everything. Instead of having to go through all these things and this happens and that happens.
Yeah.
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 Sounds good. Any questions, comments?
So where is this?
Um, so it's currently a, a Google form. It's not, um, it's in the process now, so I'm hoping that I can, um, present it for, for y'all to look over in a month or two to see, you know. And again, it will be a work agreement, so it'll continue to, to change as we change, um, our processes. But it would outline, you know, what, what it, what all processes entail, you know, setting up an, an employee to receive benefits, um, uh, yeah, what is the process to apply, and then what we do with those applications, who needs to get notified. Um, so, so it will outline all those details.
And if the HR training manual is gonna happen regardless of whether or not, um, the help that the, uh, Human Resources Committee wants, an active participation in it is something that we're gonna have to do,
Right.
uh, keep the house in order. But, uh, Chris, these, these are just merely, um, recommendations of things that HR committee could work and oversee in collaboration with the HR group for the next, uh, year.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, so, what makes, I, you know, it said support bargaining agreements. Where is, where are their copies of the bargaining agreements? Is it just on the website is the only place you would?
No, we can get, we can get, uh, printed copies if someone asks. But we try to be, uh, more cognizant of, saving trees.
Right.
So.
There used to be little booklets that came out of, remember those?
Right. And, yeah, and I think we each were given.
Yeah. At one point, yes.
Every year, or, or not every year, but when there was a new one, we would get one, yeah.
Whatever changed, yeah.
They've added so many pages now, they've actually gone to bigger versions.
Oh.
I've seen, uh, I've seen the historical ones or, you know, hand over exit.
Yeah, it was just like a pocket-sized thing, okay?
Yeah, um.
The exit interview process is, uh, something we really would like to collaborate with you on, uh, HR committee and perhaps our union of colleagues and friends. Um, currently, it's extremely outdated, um, not a great use of resources in terms of the information that it provides. Um, and potentially, you know, not, not gathering unbiased opinions on things. So, we'd like to, we'd like to actually engage with HR and the unions to start developing a better exit interview process.
Right.
That's why that's down there.
And so currently, can you just summarize what the process is?
Well, it's, it's pretty much voluntary on the part of the employee who's thinking the district, whether it's retirement or resignation. Um, there's that notification that they can fill out this form.
Hmm.
Uh, right there is, right, it's not digitized, um, so they print it out.
Also, is it hand?
They write, they write on it, there's some grading that they could do, circle here, what is your best? And, uh, and then they send it in. If they want to meet with, uh, someone from HR, they can request it. But so it's really not, it's just, it's not a good process and it's not, it's a not good date, it's not great data in the beginning.
And I'm just wondering if to get more information or bigger pictures, if, um, a, a supervisor, uh, you know, a, a principal or, or, you know, a department leader or, you know, somebody who's the supervisor in, in, uh, in other, uh, you know, non-instructional sides could offer, when somebody's leaving, to have a conversation. And if there's a good relationship, that may glean us some information that, um, we wouldn't otherwise get.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then, you know, they could be asked to, to share what they have gleaned from the conversation.
Yeah, and in my experience, leaving an employer is not always as, uh, you know, it's not always as clear as my seeing. What I'm willing to share as an employee leaving with my direct supervisor might be different from what I'm sharing with my colleagues.
Right.
So oftentimes, and, you know, uh, Adam has talked with me about this, uh, length, he'll hear something and I'll hear something different. Now, both of them can be true at the same time, it's just what's being put forth as the reason may be, may be, uh, skewed a little bit depending on who, who's doing the talking and who's doing the listening. And so we're trying to develop a process that allows for both of those, uh, where multiple facets of why I'm leaving, um, is important, I think, to really get a good picture of what's driving any particular person, uh, to leave or retire.
I think one, I, I like the idea of the supervisor at least starting that discussion, but one thing I would like to see included would be the, the next step up. Um, when, when I left, I had plenty of discussions with Sheila McEnery at the time, but Sheila was soon leaving herself, and I never had an opportunity to, to speak with any of you about what I'd learned in the last thirty-five years, which might have been a useful thing. Um, and I suppose I could have chased people down and insisted upon it, but I, I don't think that would have been all that well received. I think it should be part of a process.
It should be a process, but it's gotta be so balanced because you don't wanna make it an inconvenience or overbearing to someone as well, so how do you, you gotta digress by it.
Yeah, fair.
Because ideally, we want this to be a continuous improvement piece to us, you know. And some, some folks definitely want that and embrace what you're saying, and I can see the benefits of it, but then there's folks who, you know, no reason given, or, you know,
Just let it be go along.
traveling spouse or whatever, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that worries, it's a question for me, um, when reasons, uh, for people resigning are given on the personnel report, how does it get into the personnel report?
The reason is typically probably ninety-nine percent of the time written in their resignation letter.
Ah, and so then?
And Adam's done a good job, he's done a good job in terms of streamlining that process, but maybe in that streamlining, we've lost some of the ability to understand the true reasons. So there's essentially a form letter that ITA has assisted people with, and it essentially reads the same. Um, but this process, hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to dive a little bit deeper than that.
And we're also interested in, in the other bargaining units as well.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, uh, yeah. Yeah. Do you do exit interviews or meetings?
Yes, we do.
How do you do it?
Um, well, pretty much the same way if they give their notice, 'cause some people just now show up to work. If, when you give their
It happens here sometimes.
Their notice, um, we usually plan for their worst, their worst, their last week. We, uh, schedule a time to sit with them and we talk to them, um, and it's usually HR. I mean, we do ask, would you like your supervisor to be here, you know, and it's totally up to them. And it's, you know, and it's, it's a myriad of reasons.
Yeah, so, but do they feel like, when you schedule the time, do they feel like it's mandatory or, you know,
We
How does it come across?
We share with them, hey, we'd like to, uh, we'd like to sit with you, these are the days we're thinking of, and we, there's a sheet, would you, you know, you can have this in advance to fill out this information.
And it's part of their workday?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That may be an important part of it, an additional thing that's dumped on someone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, particularly, you know, when they're busy, like, you know, cleaning out their classroom that
Right.
Twenty-five years, oh, I have no time to talk to you.
That sounds like sort of a shuttle there.
We can schedule a freaking hour with some.
What did you do around the classroom stuff?
Oh my god, you would not believe the amount of recycling that there was in my classroom when I left. Oh, boy.
That's like, when I retire, walking on empty air.
Yeah. Well, I was actually, when I was leaving here, I was going to teach somewhere else. So I did, but I was in Turkey, so, you know, I wasn't gonna take.
Oh.
I took some books and I took a few files. I had some stuff on, you know, 'cause we had
Sloppy disk or?
Yeah, or that one, it's, you know, it's a, a thumb drive, but, um, but yeah, but there was a whole thing because I just kept these, these, uh, file cabinets filled with paper files that I had for twenty-five years. And, uh, they ended up in a big gigantic pile in the middle of the room.
Oh. I could get a little bit.
Actually, I did, I did keep some student work, stuff that, you know, I really, really liked.
Yeah.
A bunch of it is still in my attic, but I actually know that some, you know, parents, um, of the kids, and so I turned the stuff over to their parents.
Oh, that's nice. I'd love to get something like that.
Yeah, right. Uh, yes, okay, moving on.
Moving on. Um, disciplinary procedures is something that's happening, uh, and it might be beneficial for the HR committee to be at least updated once in a while. So we're working with IPDA in particular, and at the last meeting with their leadership, um, suggested that sooner rather than later be involved ITA in the conversation. What does the process for discipline look like in the district, um, how and when? For, for example, how and when should the unions become involved? Uh, what time and, what type of timetable could potentially be involved in certain cases? Um, and even before it gets to discipline, what are the stages that had to be primarily the principal in the building or supervisor, uh, if we're talking about the other unions, the directors? Um, what can, what steps can they go through that have been collaboratively built with the unions uh, in order to have a plan for approval that's pre-disciplinary, that doesn't involve the disciplinary process?
Mm-hmm.
So that, those are ongoing discussions right now.
What's currently in place, like, I know for me, we, you, you've got coaching, um, a coaching conversation, then basically two coaching conversations, then the next one's documented and expectation setting, then, you know, it progressively gets more disciplinary.
We have, we have a lot of that type of, uh, pre-disciplinary stuff going on in the district. Um, it's really based a lot on the building you're in and, and the, the status of the principal in the building and what type of supports they have. Um, we also, I think I've mentioned this a few times, and this has worked really well, and potentially we could expand that to a couple of the other bargaining units. Bringing in, we have two retired teachers that we bring in, uh, not to work with, uh, untenured teachers or teachers without tenure, but to work with veteran teachers who find themselves, you know, mid to late part of their career struggling for whatever reason. And these retired teachers have had exceptional, um, success over, uh, since probably like at least eight or nine years of them using them. So thinking of, you know, thinking along those lines, how can we develop further processes that can help folks before they get to the stage of discipline, and then when they do, what does that, what does that look like?
I, I know that, you know, some of this is, is delineated in the contracts.
Yeah.
Um, but I would be interested in looking at the contract and then also hearing, what are things that are not specified in the contract, but that happen, if you don't ever utilize.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. And as we go through this, you'll, you know, there's a, there's a term of art in New York and other states of public sector unionized employees called just cause.
Hmm.
And that's a, actually a seven-step, uh, task that you go through to determine if just cause has been meant to discipline employee. So, you know, as we work through this, though, that will be an important aspect too.
Um, so, you know, you, that, you say that this is, um, in terms of, of teachers, uh, very much, you know, but under the purview of the, uh, principals and directors. Um, but also at the secondary level, so since we shifted to department leaders rather than department chairs, department leaders who are not certified, um, administrators
Yeah.
do not do evaluation.
Correct.
Uh, department leaders who are certified do evaluations.
They, they don't certify.
I wouldn't even touch it.
I thought. That was
Louisville.
She heard it started popping for you, you know.
Do you have something you wanna share with everyone?
That was a great question, or not that great, but really great.
Um.
Uh, no, the, so department leaders, we, we negotiated that with the Teachers Association of thirty years ago.
Right.
What they really wanted to try to do is, uh, not have a member of their own unit be in a observatory or surprise room.
Okay, right.
So, department chairs, uh, have been away with other contracted department leaders. They don't do observations and evaluations. But there are some teachers who we use in, in what's called master educator position
Right.
do some level of evaluations.
But there's, oh, there's two things, you know, here. So department leaders, they're not officially, you know, evaluating or observing, but they do a lot of informal observing, um, and, you know, and, uh, so I wonder like what role do they have if they're observing a problem? Um, because they're right there.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then similarly, the people who actually do do the observations, um, what role do they have in, um, triggering, you know, either supports or actual discipline? You know, that something is observed that
Yeah.
that requires discipline. Um, so how does it, yeah.
The second part's easy. Those that do the observations have a direct line to the principal?
Mm-hmm.
So if they see something in the, uh, observation process that could potentially be disciplined, they, that's a rarity, to be quite honest with you, but when it does happen, they've gone to their building principal. If it wasn't the building principal, we get it. Um, and depending on the level of what was happening, it could, you know, it could come up to central office for, uh, you know, further review. Um, for those that are not in a conservatory or supervisor capacity, um, you know, the unions very, all of them, all, all the unions are very clear, that's not a role that they officially wanna play. Sort of behind the scenes, though, a department leader can have a conversation with the, with the employee that I certainly couldn't have. And sometimes that has actually been helpful.
And actually, the department leader could go to the, the principal, for instance,
Yeah.
and say, I'm concerned about this, or I observed this.
Yeah, uh, certainly if it would, if it rose to levels, safety, they could,
Mm-hmm.
and, uh, over the course of fourteen years, that's happened rarely, but it has happened. Usually if it's a department leader, they'll go to the union first and say, we're going to, we are going to collectively have issues if this isn't addressed.
Yeah, okay. Negotiations.
Well, you know, every few years, they roll around. And when they roll around, we knew they were coming.
Right.
And it's, we're always like, wow.
Oh, that time again?
It's that time again. So, actually, this one and, um, communications and messaging.
Mm-hmm.
Glad Chris is here, 'cause you have mentioned this a number of times. Um, we could start talking and discussing, I think this is the committee to do it at, like, what is our next round of negotiations going to look like with our most powerful and largest unit, the teachers, right? And they sort of set the tone for, uh, the rest of the groups. So, and that ties into the messaging, like, uh, and that ties into the exit interviews. Why are teachers leaving? Why potentially are we not recruiting at a pace that we would like? Why are we not retaining at a pace we would like? Um, how does that lead into our compensation and benefits packages? How does that lead into negotiations? What type of, uh, flavoring do we give the communications before negotiations? To cap, sometimes what we've heard is not completely, I'm not saying anyone's purposely misleading, but it doesn't capture the whole truth, uh, as to, you know, we hear comments like, people aren't leaving because salary is low. Um, and that doesn't capture the nuances of our, you know, our hourly rate as compared with other districts, uh, support staff that we have in buildings that other districts just simply don't have, smaller class size than we have, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Well, I think to echo what you're saying, I, as far as messaging and sharing information, acknowledging where we fall, you know, with our adjacent school districts or in school districts as whole. As a whole, with class size, with hours worked, you know, what we do offer them, definitely, I don't, it's not coming out. So, that resounding message of, hey, always gets in there and I, you know, I always, in what I do, we try to focus on the whole employee, the total employee experience and how do we have that conversation?
Yeah.
You know, and I believe that administrators, building units, and they have a role in that, but also the ITA has a role in the total teacher or even other bargaining units. They have a role to play in the total employee experience, and where do they fall in that role?
Yeah.
So I think that's part of our conversations, because we, we can talk and build in and put steps in place to an affirming, loving, collaborative atmosphere and work environment, but when it, it gets adversarial, even, you know, it stops at a certain point, okay, how do we, how do we include that? Where, where's the language? Where's the breakdown? And that's what we need, because we can do it as much as we want to, but your colleagues need to have that as well, to bring that to the table.
Yeah. Yeah, this is one where it would be fantastic if ITA and maybe some of the other unions over time, but particularly ITA, could have some representation at these committee meetings to discuss this particular item. You know, we have to be cognizant of what, how they see things too and respond to, uh, what sometimes we feel is biting criticism, but if that's their perception of something, we have to try to understand it and then either educate on the other side as to why it's that way or to fix, to fix the problem.
I'm open to criticism, but gotta have some solution, gotta have some.
I'm sure.
Yeah. The only professional criticizers, you know, are sports analysts. They're good at it. School front.
Yeah.
All right.
So next on the school front, um, and I heard they say employee experience. So, um, one of the employee experiences that we wanna improve is the onboarding process or, you know, the transition from recruiting someone and then having this, um, onboarding process that will really, um, uh, uh, show, you know, where we're at, um, uh, technology but, you know, really represent as well. Um, and this has been a long drawn-out process to get a, a, a digital onboarding process. It's one that we're still, um, building, um, but we're, we're really close now. We're working with school front, so we were working with frontline, um, and then, um, we couldn't move forward, uh, with them because of the, it didn't feed into Wincap.
Right.
And so that would mean that, you know, in HR, we would have double entries, it would just be inefficient. Um, the, so Wincap is owned by Harris, um, an employee from Harris and, you know, started their own thing called School Front, which is like an onboarding, um, platform. Um, uh, it is also a platform where if we need employees, let's say to, you know, sign up for, um, uh, their flex plans and things like that, we can send them notification. Um, uh, once we get this going, so, you know, we would send, uh, a notification, um, to a new hire saying, congratulations, you've been hired. Um, you know, they could complete their I-9 digitally, their W-4, their tax forms, um, uh, and then their information would then be uploaded into Wincap, and we could set up their positions. Um, it has been like an, um, uh, the building process of it is, um, uh, time-consuming, but we're, we're getting there. Uh, we were working with, um, uh, Sinrick, um, who was helping us. The person at Sinrick left, so now we're working directly with a school front representative, which is very helpful and is So now we're working directly with a school front representative, which is very helpful and is like speeding things up. Um so I hope to be able to show that eventually, what it would look like once uh once an employee um uh can, you know, um onboard on there. Um so that will be, yeah, that will free up a lot of time um uh that HR representatives um spend inputting data. Um also meeting with new hires to go over like pa- page by page. Um uh yeah, so so we'll also have videos on there, you know,
Uh huh.
um showing um employees uh how to complete the form, additional information. Um and yeah, it's 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 not, you know, to take away from the the people interaction that they have with us, but really to to provide that um that ease and like um uh yeah, just convenience, you know, people want to, those tax forms and such that are boring, they wanna be able to go in, complete it, and then meet with us for other other things, like salary questions and things like that.
So it takes the mundane, just systematic stuff, get that out of the way and focus on it, I think, to be sincere.
Yeah, and it also eliminates a lot of human error. Cause if you're, if you're having to type in what somebody's accept, you know, if we're doing thirty onboarding and we're putting it in,
Uh huh.
there's gonna be an error. Um so it'll it'll eliminate the errors, even though we don't, our our HR rep, they're great. So we don't have a lot of errors, but you know, eliminate the errors. Um.
That will be the employees' errors.
Yes, yes, they're gonna say, oh wait, you completed this like this, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um so I'm I'm.
So this would kind of work with the the training manual too, that, you know,
Yeah.
The training manual will, you know, guide them to do school front, I don't know.
Yeah, that could be a part of the training manual, I just want to be sure the training manual though is not gonna be like an employee manual.
Right, right.
Cause yeah, okay, cause a new employee could use the training manual to help complete this process.
Yeah.
But after that, it's it's their collective bargaining.
Right. Oh, yeah, right, right, no, no, it's just, yeah.
To. Yeah.
The bodybuilding process, yeah.
Are they just social media?
Yes, and so we're we're currently working with communications to um get a HR um social media presence. Um so starting to post our events, important information like deadlines um that we need all employees to to know about. Um uh yeah, Jalisa um who started with us um recently is working with communications on that, making sure that um yeah, that we have consistent messaging. Um like that, uh let's see, what else?
Uh communications front, some exciting news on uh on our uh re- recruitment website that we've used is run by BOCES Downstate.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
Um after how many years? Do you wanna?
Yes. After um
You've worked, you did a lot of work on that, I must tell you about your.
Five years. Oh, yes, um so OLOS, which is the um main platform, gets the largest exposure in New York for teacher um applications.
Right.
Um so I've been working with um OLOS, yeah, since I started here. But um there was one thing that we could, that they would not change or could not change. Um it was something that their programmers had to create a new system to change, and that was to make the mandatory questions a required field. They had finally done that.
Uh huh.
Um and so one of the feedbacks that we got from um EILC, like, you know, um and this has been for years, is that we're getting applications where applicants are not completing the mandatory question. And so how, you know, if that's one of the criteria during the screening, um then, you know, it becomes um uh a difficult thing when we're looking for, okay, who is aligning with the district's goals. Um uh and so that, yeah, so now every application that comes through OLOS, um they are not able to submit it. The applicants are not able to submit their application without completing those. So it's, yeah.
Eight years later.
Eight years later. And those are, that's only for teachers?
Yes.
Uh uh, yeah, only for teachers.
Yeah, we do have questions in the um applicant.
Administrators. And administrators.
Yep.
And the administrator's application also includes the questions?
Yes.
That's a big one, you know, if I could note, and we're going back now eight years, we did have a dip in the number of applications we were receiving, um once we made this mandatory. And when we did talk to BOCES and some places where we just to get applicants, we asked, why aren't you applying? And they would respond to me because they didn't wanna answer those questions. So at the time, we responded to that statement, but thank you for not wasting our time. So I I think it's important, this has been a significant shift for us, and now that it is mandatory, it does help us get the right people in the seats on the bus.
So they weren't, they weren't people who objected to the OLOS process, they objected to those specific questions?
The questions, they did not wanna answer those question.
Interesting. Of course.
They were rather choosing not to apply.
Yeah.
And it worked out really quickly amongst members of their cohorts. And although, you know, people will leave in particular universities, like, oh, in Ithaca, you must answer these questions. And they would just start, ah, some of them saying, yes, I'll apply, I look forward to answering the questions, and others were, that's not for me.
Okay, it forced a two-step process.
And it helped us.
The monopoly really is OLOS, they, you know, it's a public, it's a BOCES that runs it. And it's well-known, especially, well, actually all across the state, not just upstate. And so, you know, ninety-five percent of the students who are leaving school to go onto OLOS, and it's simple, and they can apply to literally dozens to hundreds.
Definitely.
And then they hit us, you know, says, you have required questions, go to our website.
Right.
And OLOS like, oh, excuse me, OLOS would never link our questions to their own site. Make it easier for the applicants, I think, yeah.
Well, it will be interesting to see, why did we restore our numbers?
Yeah.
Uh I mean, if having those questions, you know, we tell those applicants who we are and what we care about.
Yeah.
And if, you know, they'd rather, you know, just avoid that and and take a job where the the application process is easier, then, you know, maybe they're they're not somebody who wanna spend time and energy on.
I don't know how we would prove this, but uh maybe it's just talking to administrators or exacting even. I think over time, those questions have actually started to brand the district with what we want.
Absolutely.
And the caliber of people who are applying now, uh for a variety of reasons, not not the least of which is a teacher shortage. But um I think a lot more of them are in tune to what we want because it is now, well, for multiple years, and the work that obviously Dr. Brown has done more widely has really set set the uh tone and territory for what it means to be an educator. The recruitment schedule.
The recruitment schedule, yeah, so I put this on here as a as a focus, so last year I put up, I had a schedule. Um I wanna continue to be be intentional, but also improve on that. So, you know, doing campus visits, um you know, they already announced a teacher recruitment days, uh March twentieth, twenty-second, thirtieth. Um uh so Buffalo, um Central New York is usually held at SUNY Cortlandt and then Rochester. Um interesting enough, Rochester is still having a a virtual event, so um we'll see with that. Um but yeah, so I hope I hope to have um till the end of November, have a uh a recruitment schedule, you know, really outlining like January through April is kind of the time to to recruit. But um uh you know, the, at the job fair is one of the things that I experienced was uh there's a lot of freshmen that come to those, you know, I think they're advised to, I'm coming.
Uh huh.
Although it it creates a, an opportunity, create a pipeline, but it's like, oh, but I'm looking for this, um.
Like a long pipeline.
Yeah, um so, you know, doing campus visits with departments where we needed, you know, special ed.
Yeah. Uh huh.
And one of the schools that I wanna get down to is um Met Gers, who has a growing special ed um program, um so just doing campus visits where I meet with the groups of students. Um uh similar to SUNY Cortlandt that that I've gone and done. Um so uh so yeah, so so that's what uh one of the, one of the focuses is. Um to really tailor that, um to to get results. And then it'll be interesting to see what the um um candidates are this year, you know, coming year, so. And.
I I can't help but think of my own field when you talk about this. And um if you haven't been targeting um some of the schools where they have school psychology programs, I would have some ideas for you. And in addition, I think it would be wise to take someone who is a school psychologist or a school social worker or a speech therapist along with you. Because not all that long ago, I remember we were, we were not getting many applications in those fields.
Yeah, still the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that would be great.
And and I would like to connect with what I was gonna say about, you know, to some of these, the campus visits, job fairs, or or, you know, taking somebody else with you, so, you know, a teacher in the field, an administrator, you know, somebody who can, um you know, give a a further picture of uh of what it is to be here and what we're doing.
Yeah. And then employee resource group, so um uh we've done the admin affinity group. So we have some of the teacher group, but also expanding on that. Um you know, there has been an interest um for um aside from um race affinity groups, but also um support groups like LGBTQI, A plus um groups. Um so so expanding on the employee resource groups is um is also a um uh a goal focus um uh to get more information on OLOS.
Uh and actually Eldred reminded me when he entered the room, one of the conversations we've been having is just about the HR office structure and help needs and really um bringing it up to modern times because we know that, you know, both of you wear many hats and also the folks who support you wear many hats, but a lot of times, sometimes that can be problematic and lead to, you know, things out of flow as well. So I think down the road, it gives you the opportunity to look at it, look at the structure, look at what the real needs are in order to be effective. Uh you know, if you look at the number of employees, the groups we have and and how to really manage that, uh what does that realistically look like? Because do you doing campus visits and things like that, taking you out, you know, out of the office for several days at a time, work still continues, but so.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, so it might be good for uh you to um, you know, just uh uh bring us up to speed on who's in the HR office and what their areas are. I'm looking at the uh website right now. Um and Tammy is going to retire, but not till the end of the year.
Is that?
April, yeah, end of March.
End of March, okay. And so, um.
How many total, what is HR?
We have six right now.
Six.
Yeah, we have Jalisa, she's not on the list.
Not, I gave it.
Yeah, okay, seventy.
Who's not on the website?
Jal- is Jalisa on there? Jalisa, Leah, it's me, Evan, um Jalisa and Leah.
Who is that? No.
Yeah, so she joins us, I think, two months, huh?
Plus than a month ago, or a month.
A month?
Okay.
We'll go with one.
A month ago, yeah. Um and so, yeah, she's uh she's great, she actually um uh is doing, helping with like the social media, some of the um recruitment um um items, um supporting Mark, but then also doing um uh we've separated some of the divisions um for um uh ITA. So um Mary Hefner does um the teachers. Um and so we pulled out of that um tenure calculations, um leaves. So attend, so Jalisa is is helping with tenure calculations, um attendance management, um some of those uh like stipends, um additional things that um uh members of the ITA um are under the ITA contract. Um and yeah, and so we we continue to look at that, the the divisions of duties. So I'm glad you brought that up, yeah.
I think that's key, more before, don't don't write anything in stone because Jalisa is just getting on board.
Yes.
We still have one more vacancy and um
Right. Oh, you still have a vacancy.
Right, oh, yeah, okay.
We really, like, Dr. Brown's uh phrase, getting the right people at the right place on the bus uh resonates with us in HR too. Because um you know, with Tammy leaving soon, people will be here before we know it. I think we're gonna have to start transitioning now so for someone to understand and pick that up.
Absolutely.
And so duties will start to shift again here pretty soon.
So Anne Barnes working the whole time or?
Anne, no, Anne is, Anne is fantastic retiree.
Yeah, I.
Separately comes in uh summertime here.
Okay, she comes.
And does work in summer and sometimes even into uh from spring to fall.
Seven. Right. Right.
But then retreats to where the sun is.
Rob, you say, why would you cover the summer days?
Summer days. Yeah, it's kind of summer up here and stays with the sun.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Back in the day when uh we had had quite the revolting door of principals at at IHSS and Anne was the principal's admin assistant, a lot of us would just say, let's just make Anne principal.
Help the little princess.
Right.
Anne could have done it, she could have.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, pretty good, fantastic.
Well, we uh left a few minutes, obviously.
Okay.
The committee had certain topics that are on our list, we'd be more than happy, obviously, to.
This is very informative, thank you.
Yeah, very good.
I did mention at the last finance and I, you two can help me do it, and I've gotta wrangle a man into this um just where finance ties into recruitment and retention and start having that conversation. But I know that all ties together with um with the negotiations and so, but I definitely think, and that's a long long view conversation.
Yeah.
Definitely, that's on my radar.
And remind me, so when do we really start gearing up uh for negotiations? How far in advance of the expiration of the contract?
Well, usually it's six months or more.
Right.
But it would be nice, and we we, you know, we've always said this, but now I think we do have, we have the people in place to sort of make it happen, it would be nice to start much earlier. And in fact, a lot of the communications and how to market things could happen now outside the negotiation process. Really, what does it look be good?
And that actually would, I think, to do it outside of the negotiation.
Yeah, yeah, we have New Ron Bunch dance, we could start, you know, trademark to New Ron.
And maybe I suggest, we talked about this the last time, uh maybe bringing comps and conversations about comparables to this committee. Um there was a lot of misinformation out there the last time we went went into negotiations with our largest unit. Um and I heard things such as we are the lowest paid educators in the state.
Yes.
We have data, real data, that would say otherwise. So as part of this conversation at this committee in a public setting, maybe we just explore some of those things
Okay.
that we know are gonna come up.
Sure.
That's not negotiating in public though, right, Rob? It's just talking about what we do and comparing it.
No, no, no. No. Just information, yeah. We, yeah, it's information gathering, we need to do our due diligence.
Yeah.
So we can identify what opportunities we do have. Yeah, and ITA has syndicated that the other willing to engage in the process here, right? A number of times have said they'd love to do that, so it's can be very collaborative, this really doesn't, I mean, the data is the data. And we just talk about the data and what it means.
Yeah, data.
Data. You gotta, we trust all those bring data.
Uh huh. And so I, you know, uh so the first current track of two of them actually to expire are ESPs and the subs union, and that's a year from June when they uh when they expire. And so the ITA contract does not expire until June of twenty twenty-five, so. So we have lots of time outside of negotiations to talk about the data.
This contract with my kids, they grow up so fast.
Yeah, yeah.
We blink and it's. We blink and it's hard to.
Say that with that.
They're like my kids, they grew up so fast.
Yeah, I know.
It was like you just finished it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but my count, we have just enough time if, if we start now.
Starting right.
Right.
Right, I'm serious, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So the year.
Okay. Okay, so what we also have for uh this is talking about the ITA presentation plan.
Alright.
Now, it occurred to me, I just had an email from Aurora, who uh a little days ago. Um and uh she was just asking about, and she said, uh.
I don't know who that is.
Aurora, she's a teacher at LACS and she's part of the, what's called the ITA solidarity committee.
Okay. ITA.
They just met for the first time this school year. And she wanted to know, is the HR committee still interested in hearing for us, from us on staff retention? And so they had been doing their own kind of exit interviews. Uh now they were wanting to present to us last June. Uh and we said, well, you know, we're about to uh have new committee organization, new members, so uh you know, we really need to wait on that and then uh, you know, so it's, it's been pending since then. But when I said that, that we needed to wait, they said, actually, that's good for us because it gives us more time uh to collect more information. Uh but it occurs to me, maybe what we wanna do is communicate with Aurora and say, um yes, we are and um could you give us a kind of um agenda or a description of what you're planning to do? Uh and you know, estimate the time, you know, give us an overview of it and then we can, you know, then uh talk about when and how we wanna proceed.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Good.
Yeah. Okay, and then, so some of these things, um in terms of agenda setting for the future, are the, some of these things that for our next meeting, we uh might want to, you know, come back to?
Well, I, I have my personal preference, but
Yeah.
you know, if the committee has something, uh I mean, I think exit interviews for this committee, given what I've heard you all say before, Jill, you're, you're new to the, to the scene, but I'm sure you share some of, like the exit interview process
Right.
is in desperate need of modernization.
Mm-hmm.
And uh you know, now we have two retired ITA folks on this committee, so that can be helpful in terms of questions to ask, information to seek. So that's my, again, if there's something else you like, we feel this is more pressing than that, you're certain, this is, you know, your committee.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Sounds like a good place to start.
Start, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah. Hey, four minutes to spare.
Or could you show it off?
Talk about efficiency. Alright. Thank you very much, Bob and Vera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure.
Tiffany.